Before we start, I just want to say a little bit about what CPAC is and who we are. CPAC is a nonpartisan organization whose sole focus is to advocate for those students and their rights as students with disabilities. Massachusetts requires every town to establish a parent advisory council to advise the town on matters that pertain to education and safety of students with disabilities. Milton has a total student enrollment of about 4,400 students and 895, or about 20% of these students have disabilities. One out of five students, which requires those students to have a 504 or an individualized education plan. Students have a variety of federally protected disabilities and attend every school in Milton. We are their parents and their constant advocates. Before I go further, I want to thank our CPAC board for all of your work. And so we have you on camera here right now, and then we'll ask you to come off video so that we can focus on the candidates. But just a note on what we do and how this board dedicates its time and makes its own sacrifices. We attend monthly board meetings. We meet monthly with principals at each school and are building relationships there. We sit on hiring committees for, let me list it, our new superintendent, our new assistant superintendent, our new director of pupil and personnel services, who is yet to be determined, and a new assistant director of pupil and personnel services. So we're building, most importantly though, the focus of CPAC, of our board, is to build relationships with the families across the districts, this 20% of all of our families. We are trying to get to know each other and work together so that we can have a voice. You can find out all about our board and what we do in more detail on miltoncpac.org. And we largely have, which we have largely to thank Joanna McCarthy for that website, for developing it and maintaining it over these last couple of years. So thank you, Joanna. So now I'm just going to invite the board members who are here to introduce yourselves and what school you're representing, or where your kids are, or what your role is. And I'll go ahead and start with Joanna, since I already introduced you.
Hi, everyone. I'm so happy to see folks here tonight. My name is Joanna McCarthy. I have a five-year-old son who wants to get on camera right now, who is in preschool at Cunningham. And we have been in the district. He's been on an IEP since he was three years old. And my role on the CPAC board right now is as a preschool representative and also as a co-representative at Cunningham School. So again, welcome and thank you to the candidates for spending time with us this evening.
Thanks, Joanna. And Melissa Feldman.
Hi, good evening. Thank you all so much for your time and for being here in consideration of this really unique and special group in Milton. I have been a member of the CPAC board for 10 years. I am the mother of a 16-year-old student who is currently in and out of district placement at Anchor Academy, and I'm the mother of a seventh grader at Pierce who is on a 504. My current role on the board, this is my third year serving as a representative directly at Pierce Middle School.
And you've been on the board a long time, Melissa, right?
I've been...
Whoa. What's that?
Okay.
There you are.
Oh, I unmuted. Okay. I originally was a member at large, and then I was the representative for Glover School for a number of years, and then for two years also served in the co-chair role. And now I'm happily back in Pierce.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Darcy Maxu. Maxu. Am I saying that right?
Yeah, no, you got it right. Hi, my name is Darcy Maxu. I am co-rep with Joanna over at Cunningham. My son right now is a sixth grader at Pierce, but we had a long journey over at Cunningham, and so I'm sticking with them for at least the rest of this year. We shall see. But yes, welcome and thank you so much for coming.
Thanks, Darcy. Kathleen Jackson.
Hi, y'all. I'm Kathleen Jackson. I am a mother of four children. I have an eighth grader at Pierce, I have a fifth grader, and a second grader at Tucker, and I have a preschooler at St. Mary of the Hills who will eventually be at Tucker. My fifth grader is on a 504. He's been on a 504 for four years. I had a really tough start trying to get him on a plan at first, but when I learned the supports and spoke to some other parents out there and learned about CPAC, I was able to get the help I needed. I have been, I am a rep, I share the role with Katie McCarthy. We are reps for Tucker, and I've been in this role for two years. So glad everyone could make it tonight, and we really do appreciate your time. I know everyone has a lot going on.
Thanks, Kathleen. And Katie McCarty.
Hi, Katie McCarty. Yes, thank you all for being here. I am a rep, like Kathleen said, at Tucker. I've got a third grader there that has an IEP. I've got two other children that are not yet in the public school system, but will be at Tucker. And I've been part of CPAC for two years now. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for being here. Look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Great, thank you. And last, do we get everybody except for Kate Murphy?
Hi, everyone. I'm Kate Murphy.
Last but not least, thank you so much, Kate, for jumping in as co-moderator with Rob Milt, who will be joining us a little bit late, so.
Yes. Hi, everyone. I'm Kate Murphy. I'm doing the logistics of Zoom right now, so I'm a little bit distracted. But I have a four-year-old who is in the sub-separate program at Cunningham this year and will move to Calico next year, and this is my first year on CPAC in the secretary role.
Great. Thank you so much. And I'll be introducing my child later. She's going to be asking, she's a senior in high school, and she's going to be asking one of the questions, so I'll hold off until then. But I'd like to take a moment just to remind all the attendees, thank you for coming, and candidates, that as opposed to a Q and A or debate, tonight's event is really a forum that is a chance for candidates to take turns in presenting ideas on a range of educational issues. So candidates are invited to paste your contact info into the chat for attendees to follow up with you on their specific concerns and questions. And Kate, are you bringing them on for their intros, or am I? I'm sorry. I'm going to go ahead and do it, I think, because she disappeared. So candidates, as you know, we've asked you with a little advance notice to make an introduction tonight that addresses two things specifically. And Kate is going to be posting these issues into the chat so everyone can see them, but I'll just read them out loud. Please tell us a little bit about your life's journey in your intro, and let us know how these experiences, those experiences will inform your service to the one in five children who receive special education services or accommodations in the Milton Public Schools. Also, we'd like you to address the proposed new middle school and how it would include specially-designed classrooms that would meet the particular needs of pre-K special ed students in Milton. Since Milton elementary schools are now substantially above capacity, approximately 2,000 pupils, how would a delay in constructing a new middle school at the location identified by the school building committee impact those students? And these candidates have been given these questions ahead of time. So thank you so much. And if we could perhaps begin with Bow.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, okay, great. Thank you so much for inviting me to this forum, and it's such an honor to have the opportunity to serve our community. I'm a mother of two Cunningham students, a fourth grader and a second grader. I'm a career educator. I've been teaching for 16 years. I am a classroom teacher, a advisor, a affinity group leader, a curriculum developer, a holistic scorer, and also a class coordinator. I am a first-generation immigrant. My family immigrated here to United States when I was 14 years old. And so I have went through special education myself with the language barrier in middle and high school. And I was very lucky to have the amazing education from the Boston Public Schools and the University of Massachusetts Amherst. And with the four-year scholarship, I got two bachelor's degrees in linguistics and economics, one minor in Japanese language, one certificate in public policy and administration, and graduated with honor. And before I graduated from college, I see a lot of misunderstandings and tensions between the Western world and the Eastern world, so I devoted myself to education and continued my master's learning at UMass Amherst for teaching Chinese as a second language. And I've been teaching since then for 16 years. So in my teaching career, I've been working with a lot of students who have variety needs in their life. I've been teaching from kindergarten all the way to graduate school, from public to private schools. So overcoming language barrier myself, I understand how challenging it feels to be someone who has special needs in a school environment, especially at public schools. So I was very lucky to have a teacher who had provided me help in high school with extra tutoring on English language arts to help me overcome the language barrier. And my four years in high school, my English level have improved a lot, and I was able to graduate from high school with a scholarship to attend college. So I hope that with my experience and teaching experience where I work with students who have special needs, including autism and ADHD, in the Boston Public Schools and Milton Public Schools, I hope to bring in some of my expertise and experience teaching and working with students with special needs to contribute my passion for educating and for learning to become a better teacher, a better learner, along with our students in our public schools. And I think the building of the new school building is very necessary and is very urgent, and we hope to, I hope that it can be passed as soon as possible, and hope that this new building can be complete within the next three, four years. But in between that time period, we also have to think strategically on what can we do, what could we do collaboratively with the collaboration with the new superintendent, the principal, the teachers, and the parents in the community to find solutions to lighten up the lows that our teacher have with the large amount of students in our classrooms. I don't know if my time is up, but I can continue talking.
No, that's great. If you're finished, that's perfect. I think Kate will be telling you if your time's up, so you're good.
And they, you're all set.
Okay, all right. I can continue my conversation later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next could be here from Dan O'Neil. Whoa, you're still on mute, Dan.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry about that hiccup. My name is Dan O'Neil, and as you know, I'm running for one of the two open spots on the Milton Public School Committee. I want to thank the Milton CPAC for putting this forum together and for letting the special education students, parents, and families, as well as the Milton community as a whole, learn about myself and the other candidates. I think this is a very important forum. My wife, Dahung, and I, we have three children in the Milton Public Schools. Vivian is a freshman in the high school. Regina is a seventh grader at the Pierce Middle School, and my son, George, is in the fourth grade at Cunningham. Dahung and I met in 1995 when we were both attending Suffolk University. I was a graduate student fellow teaching English in the English as a Second Language Program. And Dahung was interning at the English Second Language Program as an undergraduate. And I was tutoring Dahung for two semesters, and we became friends. Then a chance meeting in Boston, we began dating, and eventually we became married in 2007 and started a family. When we were looking to start our family, and we obviously had, in the back of our mind, when Vivian got to be school age, where would we raise our children, and what school system in the metro Boston area had the best school system? And by far, in a way, it was Milton. I remember back in picking up the CNN Money magazine and reading about Milton being, I think it was the second-best place to live in America. And the reason why is because of the school system and all the resources that the school system provides for its students to learn and to grow. So that really attracted us, and we decided to move to Milton, and we enrolled Vivian, Regina, and George eventually in the public school system. Prior to graduating from Suffolk University with a master's in public administration, I graduated from Trinity College in 1993. And after graduate school, I did a post certificate in forensic accounting at UMass Boston. I've worked as a financial investigator for the Office of the Inspector General right out of grad school for approximately 23 years, investigating public corruption in construction and procurement fraud cases. I've investigated the Everett School Superintendent for bid rigging and for receiving stolen property. I've also worked joint investigations with the FBI, the IRS, the state police, HUD, Inspector General agents into various schemes perpetrated by Housing Authority executive directors, as well as mayors of the cities in Massachusetts. Specifically, I investigated the Fall River Mayor, Jaisal Korea. Following those two convictions of the Chelsea Housing Authority Director and the mayor of Fall River, I was proud to receive the United States Attorney's Investigative Achievement Award. Professionally, I'm most proud of exposing corruption and fraud that has been perpetrated by local developers who abused the Affordable Housing Law, which is called 40B here, of several Massachusetts towns. My efforts and other investigators that I work with has led to the return of over $10 million in hidden profits back to many towns in the metro Boston areas' housing trust funds. In the fall of 2019, I took a position as Director of Compliance and Security at the Massachusetts State Lottery Commission, investigating money laundering and other fraud schemes involving lottery players and agents and bad actors. The lottery is a $6 billion revenue agency, and we returned back approximately $1.1 billion in profits to the cities and towns of Massachusetts as free aid. And they can use that aid however they deem fit. And in Milton, I'm a strong believer in reinvesting that education money that is given to the town by the lottery in education.
Dan, sorry to interrupt you. You're at time.
I'm out of time.
Right, thank you.
All right. I just wanted to say that, just to conclude, to get to the second part. My son, George, has autism, and he's actually in Bow's son's class, too. And I am also in favor of getting the needed space for special education. It's paramount. Thank you.
Thanks. If we could hear from Leroy Walker next. Oh, you're still on mute, Leroy.
Good evening. My name is Leroy Walker, and I'm running on a campaign platform of academic excellence, budget discipline, student mental health, and communication with stakeholders. And I hope to have the opportunity to talk to you in a little more detail about each of those. But I grew up in a small town on Long Island that had a reasonably diverse population, and most importantly, included a number of African-American World War II veterans like my dad, who used their GI Bill benefits to purchase their first homes. I came to the Boston area to attend Boston University and received two degrees there. My wife and I moved to Milton in 1982, and we've raised our two sons, Leroy III, we call him Trey, and James here, and both of them graduated from Milton High School. My work with the Milton Public Schools and with special education began when I joined the Warrant Committee in 2005. I served at that time as chair of the school subcommittee and worked with the superintendent to address the cost of ensuring that the growing number of special education students received the best education that they possibly could. Our objective then, as now, was to provide a broader range of programs within the Milton Public Schools as possible. And I'm proud to say that during my time on the Warrant Committee and on the School Committee, we were able to increase the number of co-taught classrooms, we were able to create a range of new special education programs that actually served to bring out-of-district students back to the Milton Public Schools. We were able to hire inclusion specialists who had the challenge of trying to identify opportunities to increase inclusion. And as Jenny knows, we created an inclusion task force on which I served. So we had a range of successes that I'm proud of. I'm most proud of the relationship, though, that former member Mary Kelly and I developed with Michelle Conley, who at the time was the chair or president of the CPAC. During that time, when I served as chair, we set up a regular meeting schedule, we developed a list of CPAC priorities, and addressed most of those over a period of two years. So what I have to offer is some relevant experience, but most importantly, an understanding of how to solve problems. I do that with the consulting firm that I own during the day, and I would look forward to serving you again as a school committee member and bringing that expertise and experience to bear. So I have a short answer and a long answer on the question of the construction of a new middle school, but that might require a little more time. So which answer would you like?
You've got one minute.
Short answer.
You've got one minute.
Whatever fits in one minute.
The short answer is that a delay in constructing the new middle school, at least according to the school building committee, would probably delay the process by four to five years, because my understanding from Mr. O'Rourke is that if the articles fail at the Warrant Committee, then he would hire a consultant and ask them to go through a due diligence process all over again, and that would take at least two to three years. So it pushes out any plans that we have for addressing overcrowding or for new special education programs, or even for some ideas that I have for onsite student mental health services. It would obviously delay the implementation of all of that.
And lastly, thanks for waiting, Mark. Mark Loring.
Of course. Thank you so much. Again, thank you for everybody in attendance tonight. It's so great to see so many people care so much about local elections that you're attending. I also want to name, I am a father of three kids. I have a second grader and a kindergartner currently attending Cunningham Elementary, and a little two-and-a-half-year-old at home who is eagerly waiting, joining them at the school. I know it is very hard, at least for me, to be a parent and to work in balanced life. I think that's true for most parents I know. I know that's especially true of parents who are also managing children with IEP services and special education, whether it's the annual evaluations, the three-year revelves, the manifestation determination meetings, tracking of compensatory services. There is so much that goes into being a parent of a child with special education needs that it is overwhelming how much that can be. And I am constantly impressed by the parents I know with special education students, how on top of it they are able to be, given all the other balancing priorities that life brought you. So really, hats off to all of you, because I know all of you are doing that work. My background, and the reason I'm running, is really because of three things. Passion I have for education, a unique skill set that I think I have gained over my professional career, that can be of service to my community, and a strong belief in service and supporting your neighbors. So I'll start first kind of with explaining my passion for education. I've been an educator my entire professional career, over a decade of experience. Started out as a teacher, been a school administrator, now a district administrator, overseeing operations as the chief operating officer for a network of schools up in Boston, serving over 2,200 kids in grades K through 12. Education is something I love. It's something I do. It is my job, and it is also my passion. My wife is also, works in education as her entire career. So these are things that we spend our free time talking about over the dinner table, going back and forth on, you know, the intricacies of how you make great schools, and how you really work with teachers, principals, other leaders, and community members to make the best possible schools for our kids. So it's something that I have dedicated my life to and plan on continuing to do that, and hope I can bring that passion within the community I live here in Milton. And that really connects to the second reason I'm running, which is, over that decade of experience, I feel like I've gained a unique skill set that best suits me to be able to support Milton right now and work with other school committee members, to be able to address the challenges currently in front of us as a school system. In my time up in Boston, I built a $45 million high school. We built that in 18 months, on time and on budget. So when you look at things such as the space issues that we're currently seeing in Milton, that is something I know very well. And it's not just the challenges of building the school, it's, as Bow said, the challenges of dealing with overcrowding while you're trying to build the school. And that's something I've worked to manage with over $100 million of total capital improvements, both temporary and permanent. To just jump into the question of the land swap, I strongly support the land swap. As Leroy said, you know, not to support the land swap really dooms our children to at least half a decade, if not much longer, living and working and learning in inadequate spaces. It also dooms our teachers, both our general ed and our special education teachers, to work within less-than-ideal situations. And while we still want miracles from them for not providing them the spaces and the resources they need and much to provide the exemplary education we want for our kids. So we really need to push the land swap, to pass the land swap, and move forward with building the school that our students desperately need and desperately deserve. That brings me kind of to a second point regarding kind of the challenges in front of us, which is teacher retention and recruitment. You know, we know from research that there is no greater factor to a student's academic achievement than the quality of the teacher in front of them. It is so important that we keep and retain the best possible teachers for our kids, and we know we have some amazing teachers here in Milton. My kids every year love their teacher. They love them more than me. They tell me that on a regular basis, how much they love Ms. Slater, Ms. Maycom, or Ms. Mahoney, just to name a few of their teachers over at Cunningham.
Mark, I hate to interrupt you, but you are at time right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, for those great intros. We're going to move now into individual questions that are... We're going to move now into individual questions that are asked just of one person. And they are, they are big questions. So I'm sure that you might have some answers or additions in your own responses as we go along. So thank you again for, for your prepared intros and, and all the thought and prep that went into that. So the first board member who's going to be asking, Leroy Walker, is Kathleen Jackson. She's gonna come on and present you, Leroy, with your individual question. So if Kathleen could come on.
Yep, I'm on. And Jenny, these are gonna be posted in the chat too, right?
Yes.
Are we doing that? Okay, just because some of them are a little lengthy, but
Yes.
Perfect. So Leroy, the first question is to you. And research shows that all learners benefit both academically and socially when they learn in inclusive learning environments with diverse learning profiles. In part, this is due to the expertise inclusive educators have to support all learners to access rigorous standards in their ability to support personalized learning, a Milton value and priority. This research stands in stark contrast to the idea of tracked learning environments, which serves to reinforce tracked lives, because research does not show that students in tracked environments have high levels of growth and/or that they contribute to closing achievement and opportunity gaps, particularly with students of color, students with disabilities, and multilingual learners. Your website indicates support for recreating tracked classes at the middle school level. Given this, can you expand upon your vision of academic achievement and excellence for all learners? And how this vision aligns with your special education strategic plan?
I don't know what in there, and if I'm in there, I'm gonna catch it.
You're on mute, Leroy.
Got it.
Okay.
Thanks for the question.
And you each have, you, you each have about four minutes for your response.
So part of what has driven my focus on academic excellence and on creating opportunities for students at every part of the learning spectrum is the statistic that as of spring of 2022, in grades three through eight, four out of 10 students were reading below standard and were below standard in math. And at one of our elementary schools, a full 50% of students were below standard in reading and in math. That's a level of performance, or a lack of performance, that is unacceptable. In 2012 and 2013, our schools were rated Level One and were rated as some of the best schools in the Commonwealth. Since that time, in part because of the pandemic, we have seen a decline in performance that is unprecedented and has resulted in us comparing ourselves to the state average instead of performing at a level that was well above the state average and in fact set the standard for schools in the state. During that time, we had accelerated classes in the middle school and in the high school. Our students were performing at a very high level. And the idea was to close achievement gaps, which we actually demonstrated a significant amount of progress on for the African-American Black subgroup. And we started to close those achievement gaps. Now, we encountered a very interesting challenge, which is a good challenge to have, which was that as we improved the, the performance of the African-American Black students, we also saw the performance of our highest performing students improve. So it was a moving target. But that's a good problem to have. The, the problem that we have right now is even our higher performing students are performing at a lower level. That's unacceptable. So the idea here is to create excellence at every level. But we're not going to be able to do this. This isn't, this isn't about tracked classes or not tracked classes. It's about what are the things we need to do to create academic excellence? And simply going back to the regular school day doesn't do it. So as you point out, on my website, I talk about at the, at the general education level, creating some Saturday instruction, created some after-school instruction with what they call high dosage tutoring. And in the special education area, you should also be concerned, as I am, that in 2021, which is the latest data available, the graduation rate overall at Milton was 95%. Not bad, could be maybe a percent or two higher. But for students with disabilities, it was 82%. That again is an unacceptable disparity. So what I'd like to do is focus, one, on how we solve that problem. And I suggest creating a special education strategic plan to in part look at that, and also to look at some of the other aspects of our special education program that I'm hearing about on the campaign trail that could be improved. So the, the folk, the focus on tracked classes, the research actually is mixed on whether that helps or not. But I'd be interested in hearing what Mark has to say, because a number of charter schools have found a significant benefit from creating accelerated opportunities and high expectations. So that's what I'm trying to do here, and we've done it before. We can do it again.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. You are at time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Kathleen. So is, has Rob Milt arrived?
I am, I, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
That's wonderful. So although you can't see me, I'm, I'm just in my car, but I will ask the question anyway. And this is to, to Mark Loring. As a follow-up to our question, Mr. Walker, in order for all learners to have access to high-quality, rigorous, personalized learning experiences, educators need manageable class sizes that enable them to get to know their strengths and the needs of their learners. As a school administrator and current parent, please articulate how you will address the tension between high class sizes and maintaining rigorous, standard-aligned, quality and personalized learning experiences for all learners, particularly with regard to the impact on delivery of special education services and other educational opportunities, including arts, music, and other, other specials for students in Milton. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the question. I I think this goes back a little bit to the, the question of the land swap, right? Of the facilities on which we are providing, right? We are seeing increased class sizes within Milton, because our school administrators at this point have no other choice. They have no other place to book the kids. And so what you see with the ramifications of that is the trickle-down, down effects within class sizes, within, you know, special education, finding it difficult to find spaces for pull-out services, for one-to-one evaluation meetings, for coverage for evaluations, for testing services, anything like that. It, it is a waterfall effect that, that is challenging to address, but absolutely something we need to. I think Leroy made some good points around the fact that the graduation rate and the discrepancies between special education students and regular education students is appalling, and it's something that we need to address. I think everybody would agree with Leroy that we want generalized excellence for every student. I just disagree as it relates to the tracked classrooms. I think when you start tracking classrooms, the students who lose out the most are your special education students, because you pull out your higher learners that you can partner with students with special needs in order to support their own learning. It hurts the high achievers, and again, this is proven within the research, as was previously referenced in the prior question. Because really, when a kid truly understands something, it's when they're able to teach it. By partnering students of different levels in terms of academic ability, you are both pulling up the lower students and you are pulling up the higher students simultaneously, because the higher students are having to support their partners. And you make a collaborative process throughout the educational process. You know, it is very important that we do not try and track our special education students and silo them. Right? Back in the day, that is really how we treated special education, is right there in a different class. We're gonna take our higher performing kids, put them in a very high class, and then we'll see what happens with our special ed students. That's not something I would want for my own kid. That's certainly not something I want for my peers, that my, my students go to school. We need to give everybody the best possible educational experience. We need to do whatever we can to try and provide extra space for our students in our schools so that we can decrease class size, so students can, teachers can better know their students. We always talk within my school about challenged and know. We want teachers to be able to challenge their kids and also deeply know them. And it is really hard to do both of those things when you have 30 kids in front of you, especially when you have students with very specific and particular special needs that you are trying to support. You know, there are not easy answers here. I'm not trying to indicate that there are. But, you know, the land swap is one. I think tracking is the wrong direction for the district and for our students, especially our special education students. And I think we need to kind of work collaboratively to see what we can do to get more opportunities for smaller group instruction to support all students, especially students with special needs.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, our next question is going to Bow. And I, before we, we ask, I've invited my daughter Sophie D'Alessandro, who is a senior at Milton High School, to prepare a little statement about a relationship with a teacher, or it was actually a team chair, Mark Harrison, who has just left as of March 31st. And I thought she could give us some testimony to what that relationship has meant to her.
Okay. Hi, I'm Sophie. I'm a senior. I started working with Mr. Harrison my freshman year, which was a very long time ago. He made sure that I was learning everything I needed to know and helped me kind of start transition planning earlier on to lead up to like junior year and senior year, and made sure that I have the skills that I needed for that, which was very helpful, because I would have not gotten here. Like, I would have not gotten through that year without him, because it's also COVID year, so it was kind of hard on me, and I was, he made it better.
Thank you, Sophie. So the question. Sophie will be completing 14 years in the Milton Public Schools this year. And during that time, we have had five directors of pupil and personnel services. So over 14 years. This turnover is a challenge on many levels, particularly with regards to implementing strategic plans and visions. And even more importantly, building trusting relationships with families and staff across the entire district. As you know, this year, both, we're losing both Mark Harrison, who is the Assistant Director of Pupil and Personnel Services, who was put into place by Susan Maselli, who is our Director of Pupil and Personnel Services. They, they are both leaving the district. And so the question, Bow, is as a School Committee Member, what are some of the first steps you will take in understanding and addressing the impact of staff turnover? And what do you see as the most important steps in building trust?
Thank you so much, Sophie, for sharing your experience with Mr. Harrison. And thank you, Jenny, for the question. I agree, having that trust relationship between the teacher and the student is very essential. Because if you don't feel comfortable in the learning environment, you're most likely not going to speak up. You're not going to engage in the learning. So to address this question that you put in front of me as a School Committee Member, what are some of the first steps that I would take to understand and addressing the impact of staff turnover? So in the past couple of months, ever since I decided to run for School Committee Member, I have been trying to educate myself with as much information as I can about the school district. So I'm listening into the CPAC monthly meeting, trying to contact the parents who have children who have special needs and want to hear about everyone's experience. I'm in contact with the principals, with teachers who work in the district, and also with Susan Masali. I'm trying to understand the implementation that we have in the school district. So I, I've been trying to learn and hear about everyone's perspective and experience and see what could I bring in to bridge the communication gap perhaps, or to, to to make sure that we can collaboratively work together to come up with solutions. So I can, some of the steps that I would propose to do if I elected to be a School Committee Member, whether even, even if I don't. I, I believe in education. I'm very passionate to help students to achieve their potential. Even, even the potential that they might not see that, see it in themselves, but we can help them find it. So I would say attending monthly meeting, CPAC meetings, communicating with the Superintendent, Dr. Peter Perrow, who's going to come in in July, and working with the school principals, and listening to the teachers who are doing the everyday work in the crowded classroom situations with our students, to see what are the things that we have in place right now? What is working and what is not working? How could we collaboratively come up with solutions that can address the needs that our students have with the limited resource that we have? Until the building is built, right? Because we know the space is a very important issue. I, every time I go into my, my children's classroom to volunteer or meet the artist, reading for diversity, or doing lunatic events, I see how overcrowded the classrooms are. Their, their classroom are cramped from the library. And my, my daughter's classroom was also, got moved into the library because of the, the pipe burst. And there are, we, we see that from the School Committee presentation last Friday, that there are classes happening in the stairwell, classes happening on the side of the gym, like out from half of the gym. How can our students learn in this kind of destructive, noisy environment? So before the building is built, we need to think critically about what could we do as a community involving all the decision-makers, the principals, the superintendents, the director of special education, and CPACs, like listening to the parents, and to make sure that we can provide the support, that we can all make sure that our student can succeed academically and ensure academic growth. And second piece is that building trust is coming from sincere, sincerity, right? It's not like we, we are going to create another program, right? We are going to have this program and we're going to teach this. But it's something that we have everyday interactions as a teacher with our students. And we, we, it had to come from how, how much we care about our students, to know what they are going through at home, how, maybe there's certain things happen in the family that have impacted the students' learning, or their moods, or the, the performance in class. So we, we need to understand our student in a personal level. But with this, this 30 students in a classroom, very big school's classroom size.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. You're at time.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
No, no problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Bow. So I am gonna call on a sort of, I guess you would say she's on the bench for the CPAC Board. Jenny Robertson, is that correct?
Yeah.
Correctly. Jenny is coming on as our new, she's following Joanna McCarthy as our new preschool rep. And Jenny, I don't know if you want to say anything more before you.
Oh, sure. I, I just, I have a, a daughter, my older one is at Collycock. She's a kindergarten. Oh, sure. I I just I have a a daughter. My older one is at Collycot. She's a kindergarten. And my younger one is um in preschool and she'll have, she'll be in one more year of preschool next year. Um she is in one of the integrated classrooms at Cunningham. And um I have a question. I believe this is the last for the um the individual questions. This is for you, Dan. Um and it's about a parent who recently reached out to our Collycot rep, Tracy Minozza. And he shared these words, uh it's sad that most of us, meaning parents of kids with special um with special needs have a hard uh have to fight hard with the district for services. In fact, most of us have to hire professional advocates for a better fight. How do you assure that every special needs student in our district will have fair and equitable services based on individual needs? So that's what the this parent had reached out um expressing. So that this is the the question for you, Dan. On your website, you talk about tough decisions that need to be made, that students and their families come first. What would this mean for the district? Um since we're legally required to provide students with special education services?
Yes, uh thank you so much for that question. I think it all boils down to what Bow was talking about about trust and whether or not a leader such as the new hire for the Special Education um Director and their supporting staff. If the parents don't trust that person and they're not honest and in following through with what they say they're going to do, then people become frustrated, not only uh a- as a student, but also as as parents and as teachers themselves. So I think that fostering a um an environment that is inclusive of all students, and especially here in special education. There are laws and and regulations that are set out and policies are written. And uh education plans are taught, curriculum is thought of and taught. But I come from a a background where you have to have measurable results. You have to be able to have standards and make sure that those standards are met. You have to have a goal and you have to work towards meeting that goal. So I I find it super frustrating that parents have to hire an advocate in order to get the 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 legally um available uh programs and help that they need. That that's unacceptable in 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 my family's uh um personal struggle with um you know, finding my son George the necessary uh resources and assistance in or in order to help him thrive in in a public setting. Uh i- i- it becomes very frustrating and when you don't have that relationship with the 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 correct um leader in a in a particular uh department here with the special ed, things start to fall apart very quickly and people become frustrated. They almost become uh i- in a s- in a s- in a cycle that they 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 feel that they're not being heard. Well, I hear I hear those voices. Uh I I I am one of those parents. And I will be that advocate on the school uh committee if so uh elected to do so. So I I I believe that this this the that the equity that that you were talking about is 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 so uh is so needed here in in the special ed department that that I I believe that with my background, that we will hold people accountable to achieving their goals and helping our children thrive in 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 an educational environment that's healthy and trusting. So I hope I answered that question.
Thank you. Um and thank you, Jenny. And um I just wanted to um credit that question to um Eric Wang, um who is on this call tonight. Um and so thank you, Eric, um for sharing that that story and that testimony. Because I think it really, it all comes down to these stories and and sharing um sharing what our needs are and how they're not being met. Um so thank you. Um and thanks, Tracy, for forwarding that along. Um we have our final question that will go out to each, to everyone. It's the same question. And I'm going to invite Rob again. If if Rob, can, do you have camera, Rob, or? Rob Milt, are you out there?
Uh yes, I'm here.
Okay, there you are.
Okay. So let me uh I'm happy to ask the question. Just bear with me for one moment. So the the question is just uh um okay. All candidates.
This is dedication, right? I mean, he's commuting back. Sorry, Rob.
So I I apologize. I'm I'm just commuting back from there. I know, I I appreciate it. Just pulled in in front of my house.
This is real life.
I'm at a uh, this is real life. This is what we do. We have jobs. We have kids. Um CPAC CPAC asks all candidates to set aside their their political views and stand up for the rights of children with disabilities who deserve an education, at least in the least restrictive environment. In Milton, this often means specialized classrooms that meet the needs of children who require paraprofessional. Um in recent years, national school committee races have become partisan and polarized. Since CPAC's goal is to support all MPS children, could you describe a situation where you've worked closely with someone with opposing, with an opposing political viewpoint um to improve um a situation um and particularly a policy situation? Thank you.
And so each um each candidate has four minutes to respond. And we are going to begin with Mark. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you so much. Um yeah, I I completely agree with the premise of the question. Uh it is sad how polarized something like school committee has gotten, right? The goal of school committee is to support schools and students and to provide the best quality education for every student in our town. I think that's that's certainly all I want. And I believe that's all any of the candidates here tonight want. Um and that's what our town and our students deserve, is the best possible education, every single one. Uh I deal with uh people with different viewpoints, politically, socially, all the time. Kind of in my role as COO uh in Boston. Uh there are lots of people with different viewpoints in Boston. And so uh one of the things I do is uh work with community groups on initiatives that the school is doing, whether that is um uh you know, organizing events outside of the building to bring students into, I've worked with other um organizations, whether that's um impacts we are having on the community, such as complaints around uh recess is noisy and why can't the kids be quieter outside? Whether issues such as a school building and the impact that that will have on neighbors. Um there are lots of of conflicts that come up on a daily basis. And I think it gets back, in terms of how you approach those, it really gets back to the point Bow made, which is you approach it with with humility, openness and trust. And you you are a person of your word. You follow through on communication. Uh you listen, actively listen. Uh you try and find compromise where you can. Um no one who disagrees with you is is evil. They uh just have a different viewpoint. And there are times too when that viewpoint is valid and you are wrong and need to move yourself. Um it's all about the conversation. That's really what I love about the work of education uh and why I do it as long as I've had, is because it brings everybody from the community in. Because everybody cares so passionately about our kids. Um and I care so passionately about our kids. And so that's that's why I do the work. That's why I'm excited and why I'm running for Milton. Um and that's what I I hope to do if elected.
Thank you, Mark. So Bow, we'd like to hear from you next.
Thank you for this question. Um as a teacher, we always work with other people who have different perspective. So my first approach is often listen to what made you say that, right? So um we, our background, our education, our experience shaped the way how we approach different things, why we decided on different political views or different um perspective. So I love to hear about what the reasoning behind that first. And of course, I will share my point of view as well and my perspective of why I say I think this would be a better solution. Or maybe, maybe we can come into compromise. There might be points that we agree with each other. There might be a point that we are different, different views from each other. But how can we come to collaboratively um to a solution that can help make sure that our students are all excelling? Or have academic growth that we promised them to? Um and as a teacher, I think that having that early intervention at the beginning stage of student's diagnosis is very important, but also providing that emotional support to the family, to the parent and to the kid. Because it is very hard for someone to put a label on us saying, oh, you're dyslexic. What does that mean, right? And as a parent, we don't always know what exactly that means and what what does it do to our child. So we we need to have provided emotional support and education to our parents and our children who um might be diagnosed with special needs and so that we can better help our students to achieve. But this also requires us, the teachers in the classrooms, also aware of different characteristics of special needs. So right now in Milton, we have eleven category of special needs, right? Um and special learning disorder is uh the the top one. And the second one is autism. So what what does it really mean for for our kids? We are all very in unique individuals, although we might um even even two kids who might identify with autism, but their characteristic is different. Their needs is very unique. So as a teacher, how can we address that in our classroom, right? Or we know that is our our teacher have been doing so much work in the Milton Public Schools with the large class size. And they've tried to differentiate different teaching style by providing personalized learning, right? Um but do we have enough professional development to equip our students uh and our teachers to know, to identify characteristic and to uh to be able to have better tools and resources to adjust our students' needs? Starting from very beginning level. Um so is, I I know that I'm off topic, but I I think it's also related. Um i- i- the the importance of having the tools in the toolbox for our teachers, the support for our parents, and also the support for our students going through this whole process is very important and making sure that they feel comfortable being themselves. Because that's one important thing for educating, is not trying to fit everybody into a cookie cutter, right? We are all very unique. We all learned differently. We might have a lot of similarity, but we also have a lot of differences. But we try to embrace that, embrace our differences and and to have, to find who we are. That is a very important question for a student as well. Kate, is that?
Yes, your time. Thank you, Bow.
Thank you so much for your question.
Thank you. And Dan, we'd love to hear from you next.
Yes, thank you. Could I, could you repeat the question?
Oh, sure. Uh, Rob.
Sure. So I'm just gonna, I'm just going to the uh, what's in the chats or but it, so if you look in the chat, you'll see the question. Basically, the the gist of the question is, um you know, uh really CPAC is asking all candidates to really just focus on our kids and um you know, sort of as much as possible steer away from sort of the polarization, politicalization, you know, it's been going on. But with it, but but the last part of the question really focuses on, you know, describe a a situation where you, you know, really worked closely with someone uh where you had an opposing political viewpoint um to improve a situation.
Okay, thanks, Rob. And um I just want to tell you that I was able to get into the chat room and I'm and I'm I'm super happy that I was able to do that. Well, I I guess it all boils down to leadership, Rob, and um people's uh o- opposing viewpoints um should be heard. Uh you know, diversity and opinion is is always welcomed. Uh when I work with individuals uh at at work, uh when I when I'm with my family and also when um I'm educating, you know, my special needs child, George. Um I don't think that I've ever come into a a political polarized uh situation at school. Because the the common goal for the special ed teachers and uh all all the staff is you know, making sure that the kids feel safe, that they that that they're learning, that they're accomplishing their goals that are set out before them, that they're being nurtured. So do I come across people in my life that I have, you know, a a different uh political uh opinion or, you know, philosophy? Yes, yes, I do. But if you can have a conversation with the person, you can have a uh, you know, or or and you can listen to that person and you can understand where they're coming from. Uh and you can actually meet in the middle. You can give something up. I think that that is what is is true leadership. And you may not be able to to turn that person's um o- o- opinion a hundred percent towards yours, but you'll be able to 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 reach to reach a common ground. And and I see that in in my workplace every day. I see it in the classroom. I I see it uh you know, uh literally uh working its way out through the special ed program. So um there there's going to be a a a lot of tough decisions to make uh in in hiring uh the the new special education administrator. It 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 this this hire has to be the right one. It has to be a home run. Uh and that person has to be held accountable to upholding the laws uh in the rules and regulations uh uh in in the mission statement of the school system itself. Because without that leadership quality, without having measurable outcomes, without holding people accountable, uh you you're gonna have uh different opinions. You're gonna have people being frustrated. So I I one hundred percent believe that diversity of of opinion or, you know, a political stance is not always a bad thing. It it you get, you get to know and understand the person that you disagree with. So um I I I thank you for giving me the opportunity to answer that question, Rob.
Thank you, Dan. And our final response from Leroy.
Thank you. So I think this is an important question. Uh it may be the most important question uh that you've asked tonight. And the reason is that um it's a question about how do we arrive at solutions? Because we have some very difficult decisions that we're faced with. But let me give you three examples. Um and as someone said earlier, let me uh close with the real life example. But uh one of one of the situations that come to mind were when we started to talk about uh how we could close the um achievement black uh achievement gap for Black and African American uh students, that subgroup. And there was a lot of discussion about uh potential ideas, a lot of back and forth about what we should do, what we shouldn't do. But uh in these situations, I find it uh very useful to find the things you can agree on. And what we agreed on was an approach, which was uh come to us with your idea about how, what innovation should occur. Uh give us the research that supports that idea. Give us the success metrics that you'll use to measure whether you're progressing uh in achieving success with that idea and what would the cost be? And what we settled on at the end of the day um was early literacy. Because early literacy is uh probably the most important gift you can give to uh our first, second and third graders. And that's because if a student is not reading at third grade level by the time they leave third grade, then uh they're behind for every year thereafter, because third grade is the transition from learning to read to reading to learn. So we were uh successful in talking that through and in developing some early literacy programs that were um quite successful. Uh second example would be uh when I was on Town Government Study Committee, we looked at whether we should abolish or recommend abolishing the town meeting model. And we looked at a number of different uh options for town government, including And we looked at a number of different uh options for town government, including uh the town council model that Randolph now has. And there were a number of opposing views, and I'm not sure they were politically motivated, but they were just different ideas about um how best to serve the town with a form of government. And at the end of the day, after our research, we decided that the town government uh model uh town meeting model was and still is the best model for us. The real life example is that um we are going to be faced with some incredibly difficult funding decisions that involve both general education and regular education. I say that because uh right now we are funding preschool teachers, sped AIDS, a five oh four teen share, uh BCBA's, all with grant money. And we are funding uh some positions that we just recently agreed to with uh free cash. That's what's called funding uh recurring expenses with one-time money. And what we're going to need to do is make some very tough decisions about what we will be able to fund and what we won't be able to fund going forward. And my prediction is that we will have uh an override request next year. And if that override request doesn't pass, then some of those positions that I just named um will no longer be available. That's going to create a a crisis because the decision initially to fund these positions with grant money uh probably wasn't the best decision, but it was the decision that I I suppose the school committee felt it had to make at the time. But we're we're well over in terms of what we've funded with uh what I would call one-time money and what we're going to be able to fund going forward. So um I have experienced that, as I said, resolving those types of difficult challenges and uh I would love the opportunity to do it again.
Thank you, Leroy. So um we've come to uh our final part, uh our closing statements. Um, and each candidate will have three minutes to have concluding remarks. Anything that has surfaced for you that you're just just have to get out there um or add on to, um please do it. And I I just want to say on behalf of the CPAC board and all of us in the Milton community that I would love to hear really, I've heard some a lot of great things tonight, um a lot of passion. But I think what everyone wants for their kid um kids is just a sense of belonging and feeling like they have a valued place in the learning community and they feel safe. They feel safe there. Um, I've I've heard about trust and um you know, accountability, um conversations and um collaboration. But if if you could really speak from your hearts and um, you know, to that issue of we all want our children to feel like they belong in the Milton Public Schools. Thank you. So I'm gonna pu- I'm going to put in the chat so that you're not guessing who's going when. The final statement order um is going to be Dan, Leroy, Mark, and then Bow, and we tried to distribute the order evenly. Um, and each candidate has three minutes for your closing remarks. Thank you.
Again, thank you uh to this uh the CPAC uh forum uh and all the members and to the people that are out there watching uh this important forum. Uh, thank you for taking time out of your busy day to to listen to what we have to offer as candidates. As I said before, the reason why uh I'm running for uh school committee is uh first and foremost, uh for my son George and all the other children that are like him in the special ed uh program here at Milton. But as I mentioned before, George has autism and our family believes that special education is extremely important. But I'm also staunch advocate of funding and doubling down on math, science and technology programs as well. And that should be the focus of our children's education. It should be excellence. It should be competitive. It should be result-based. People should be held accountable if they're hired to do a job and if they're not doing it well, then th- there should be some consequences in that. We need to have a a new leadership in the school board itself. There are two open positions right now. Uh, I believe that I have I have a different background than uh my fellow candidates here. I'm not from education. I'm I'm from the finance and uh the accounting world in which result-based uh measurables are first and foremost um a means to see whether or not something is working, to see whether or not it's profitable, to to see whether or not that this is something that should be funded. Uh, I with my background, I'll be able to find some wasteful spending in that sixty-five-plus million-dollar budget and be able to apply it back to special education programs that are 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 solely underfunded. Um, I will be trans- I I I'll be a another advocate of transparency. Again, accountability, openness. I want to be that advocate that you don't have to spend money on uh in in order to fight for your child. I I want to be that person that you can come to. I will listen. I'll be there. I'm not going anywhere. Uh, I I I live in Milton. I want to advocate for you. I I want your voices to be heard. I want the people that don't have a voice come forward and I will advocate on behalf of your family and your mo- most importantly, your child. I I I thank you again for taking the time out to to listen to uh my candidacy and what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. And thanks for the opportunity um this evening to to talk with you and to hear from you. My objectives are quite simple. I believe our special uh special education students uh deserve the same opportunity to excel as any of our students. And that's why I cited the statistic about four-year graduation rates. And I think that should drive some thinking about, one, why is it the case that uh students with disabilities are graduating at such a lower rate? And more importantly, uh what can we do about it? So there are some big picture issues here that I have the experience and expertise to help with. Uh, and I'll talk about those in just a moment, but uh harkening back to the question that Ms. Roberson raised. What I'm hearing from parents on the campaign trail, and I also heard from Mr. Huang, by the way, is a dissatisfaction with the team process that creates the IEPs. Uh, some some families, as you know, can't afford an advocate and some families that are able to engage advocates are met with uh legal counsel that are hired by our schools. I want to create a a team process that is cooperative. That's I think what we had before, and I want to make sure we go back to that. It should be cooperative rather than adversarial. I'm not a neat naive enough to think that everyone will agree, but I certainly am the candidate that will ensure that uh the process is cooperative rather than adversarial. If you look at some of the information that you asked us to look at uh in the presentation that you sent, sped student population has increased by approximately thirty-six percent over the last year. And we just found out recently that out-of-district tuition costs are increasing by four fourteen percent from this year to next. And as I've outlined for you, there are uh quite a number of what I would call uh underfunded positions that we're going to have to address. So what I would say to you is we're facing some funding crises that are going to require uh not only experience of problem solving, but experience and understanding um our budgets and how they operate, both at the town level and at the school level. Um, I have that experience and expertise, but more importantly, uh, I would close with what I opened with, which is our special education students deserve uh the same opportunities to excel as everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Leroy.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, everybody, once again, for the opportunity to speak tonight, for your attendance and participation. I want to just thank my other candidates as well uh for coming and and discussing. Um, I want to thank Leroy for his long service for the community of Milton. Uh, Dan for uh just opening up about his own um experience as a parent of a student with special needs. And Bow uh with her um dedication as kind of a a longtime teacher and educator. So thank you all uh as well for the conversation. Uh, before I end, I just want to hit on three things. I I don't I feel like it have come up and I haven't had the chance to to speak on yet. Uh, that when I've talked to families, I've heard a lot, as other candidates have mentioned, on the campaign trail of these are big particular challenges that families are experiencing within um Milton Public Schools as a parent of a student with special needs. Uh, and that first is kind of the the need to retain excellent staff and the impact, the turnover within team chair and director level positions and student uh special education teachers is having on the parent's relationship with their child's education. Uh, that is um a a huge problem that we need to tackle. Within my own work, uh I oversee uh human capital, uh which is compensation, HR benefits, staff recruitment and retention policies and to find ways that we are keeping and retaining the best possible talent for our kids. I think that's something we need to look really closely at of of what is driving these folks away. What do we need to do? Because having that consistency is so important for any student, but especially a student with special needs. Um, where where change can be hard for many of them. Uh, we need to keep that that consistency of service and that consistency of connection they're making with those staff members. Uh, and then the second thing is the communication. Way too many parents have told me that it feels adversarial, as Leroy mentioned. That is the worst thing possible, right? Uh, I I pride myself in my um all the things I do as a CLO. Um, one of the things being managing our COVID response policy, right, communication there was key. In all the ways in which we are communicating with families, we need to be approaching it with humility, with openness. And especially in circumstances where families are approaching us about concerns they're having about their child's academic success. That is a scary time for a parent to not know why their child isn't achieving when they're first kind of moving into that uh IEP evaluation process. That we need to be as supportive of them as possible within that. The fact that so many parents have to find an advocate, have to go outside of the district to get services is criminal. It's uh so, so sad that we do that to our neighbors. Um, and the last piece is just that that point of families going outside the district. We need to do more to bring families back into the district. I've heard that time and time again of concern from families. And all families want is their kid to go to their their local school, so they're at the same school as their neighbor's kids, as the kids on the street when they play street hockey, when they play throw the football around, that they're they're having those relationships in school and outside of school and not feeling separated. Uh, and I think that gets back to kind of the what you asked us to respond to, which is that sense of belonging, bringing them back into the school environment, having them feel special and valued within that school environment by providing them the spaces they deserve. Uh, again, another shout out to that land spot. We really need to push that through. Um, all of those things are are so, so important and things that I work on on a regular basis within my role in schools and have done throughout my experience, um, Lawrence in Boston. And and certainly hope I can lend um my expertise in serving my fellow uh community members here in Milton on school committee. So thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And lastly, Bow.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for taking your valuable time on a weekday evening and listening to the four of us share about our platform and our vision. Um, thank you all my colleagues who are running along on this race. I learn a lot from each other from from listening to you all. Um, I believe before we talk about achievement gap, we need to talk about the diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging piece. Again, if our teachers is not sincerely trying to understand our students' experience, the relationship will not be built. The student will not feel comfortable to share what they are char- what they are struggling with with the adult that they're working with. And I also a- agree with what Mark said. We need to retain our excellent teachers. They have been very um put off to to this challenge that they're facing every day with overcrowding issue, with the limited funding that we have to help our student excel. What can we do as a community to support our excellent teachers? I know that we have twenty percent of our student bodies who are who have IEP or have special needs. But twenty-eight percent of our school budget is for special education. By law, that is what we require to do as well. I understand that we have a lot of turnovers in the director position for special education. And I'm curious to find out what is the reasoning for that. So that's why I tried to reach out to Susan Masala Masali and um and Brian Harrington to to understand the their experience at the Milton Public School. Was it because of the funding that we got from co- during the COVID year? Is phasing out so that we don't have the budget for that? Or was it really because of how we are managing our school budget? Um, because we know that by keeping our student inside our district this year, we save two hundred and two thousand dollars. And if we can continue to provide the service that our students need, we are going to save millions of dollars in the long run. So we need to main keep our students within the districts. And we need to make sure that we can work collaboratively to to make sure this this implementation of special education is reasonable, equitable, right? I am not a finance person. I come from a teacher's perspective. I come from a parent's perspective. I hope to dedicate my service to our community to make sure that our students have the excellent education that we promised them for. And to make sure that they have the skills to excel after they graduate from high school, when they face the world to be global citizens. I think we need to make sure that we have excellent executive functioning skills implemented into our um school system to make sure our students have the tools that they need to excel academically and in personal life. Thank you, Bow. You're at time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you all um collectively for, again, for gathering and for not just tonight, but for this whole journey that you're on. Um, for the benefit of all of our students, it is deeply appreciated. And again, not overlooked. Your sacrifices of time and energy are not overlooked. We um so appreciate your willingness to step up and have these conversations. I also just want to thank Beverly Ross Denny, our liaison on the school committee right now. Um, she has been a stalwart supporter of CPAC and our mission to advocate, educate and participate and has really guided us in seeing the larger picture in Milton. Um, I'd also like to thank again Kate Murphy for hanging this whole Zoom presentation together. I think I believe we had close to seventy uh folks in attendance, which is wonderful, and that's a lot to manage. Um, and last but not least, I'd like to thank Rob Milt, who really put this all together this year and then had a last-minute um business hearing of sorts in Springfield. So he's here and thank you, Rob. We could not have done this without you. So really appreciate your your effort. I don't know if you want to say anything, Rob. I I want to give you the last word.
I do not. I hate having the last word.
Okay.
But I will say, thank you so much to all those who attended this evening to hear from our candidates. Thank you for uh taking time to run. This is no small undertaking. Uh, we appreciate the uh what you bring, you know, each bring to this race and uh wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Rob. Have a wonderful evening, everyone. Thank you again for coming.